Okay, let's see, I gotta get back to where we were. Okay, so, good evening, folks. This is, again, this is the, I've lost track, January 11th, 2021, meeting of the Goss Town Select Board. I wanted to just go through a roll call once again, so that people who may have joined us, we just came back from a short recess to address some technical issues. So, let's just go through the roll call, and then we'll get back into the agenda. State your name, and whether or not anyone's with you. Carlos Adams, there is no one in the room with me. Kelly?
Kelly Boyer, no one in the room with me.
Peter?
Peter Georgantis, no one in the room with me, and also, it is not running on TV.
It's still not running on TV?
No, it isn't. All it says is the Goss Town Select Board Meeting, January 11th, 2021, resuming at 7:00 PM. As of now, there is nothing on but that. I'm watching the TV right in front of me.
Adam McCune, can you provide us an update with the status?
Looking at the TV, I'm looking at the TV right now, and it's not on. Well, good for you. So what you're telling me now, beside my laptop not working, my TV's not working. That's what you're telling me?
Yeah, Peter, I can see it on my TV, too. I just looked at it. I did, yes.
Okay, it is on now, it just pops on.
Okay. I wanted to just go through a roll call once again, so that people who may have joined us, we just came back. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna start with a roll call again, then we'll get back into the agenda. Carlos Adams, there's no one in the room with me. Kelly?
Kelly Boyer, no one in the room with me.
Can everybody else mute until you're talking, please? We're getting a lot of crosstalk. Peter?
Yes, nobody in the room.
Thank you. Mark?
Yes, sir, and nobody in the room with me.
Thank you. And Chat?
Chat Bowen, no one in the room with me.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm gonna get back into the agenda. I'm gonna go to item two on the agenda, which is the acceptance and correction of the minutes. We have both public and non-public minutes from the meeting of December 28th, 2020.
Carlos, I'll make the motion. We accept the 12/28/2020 public and non-public minutes with corrections if need be.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second it.
Second by Chat. Any discussion on the motion? Call a roll, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Announcements. Let's see, I have a couple of announcements here. Get down to them. First announcement is relative to the Budget Committee Public Hearing. The Goss Town Budget Committee will hold a remote public hearing via Zoom tomorrow, Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, on the 2021 budgets for the town, school district, Goss Town Village Water Precinct, and Grassmere Village Water Precinct. The public can participate in the meeting, the public hearing, I'm sorry, by calling area code 603-766-5646, and using the participant code 685-562, followed by the pound sign. Members of the public can also watch the meeting on Goss Town Television Channel 22, or on the GTV Facebook page. Members of the public with questions about accessing this public hearing, or that want to make public comment prior to the public hearing, should contact Catherine Fisher at area code 603-497-8990, extension 100, or by email at Catherine.Fisher@GossTownNH.gov, prior to 4:00 PM on the meeting date. Members of the public experiencing problems with access during the meeting are asked to call area code 603-384-3624 for assistance. I have a second announcement. This is a reminder to residents interested in running to serve as an elected town or school district official. Candidate filing opens at the town clerk's office on Wednesday, January 20th, during regular town hall business hours, which are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The candidate filing period ends Friday, January 29th, at 5:00 PM. Please note that candidates filing on the last filing day, which is January 29th, 2021, must appear in person. The candidate openings are currently listed on the town's website. The list can be found by clicking on the Election Info on the homepage, and looking under the Town Clerk's 2021 Election Information. Official opening is listed as of January 4th, 2021. Future resignations of elected officials may add to candidate openings through the close of the Business Day on January 19th, 2021. The following is the list of the candidate openings for both the town and school. Town election, Select Board, there are two for three years. The Budget Committee, there are four positions for three years. And also, on the Budget Committee, there is one position for two years. So there's some staggered terms for the Budget Committee. For the Cemetery Trustee, there is one opening for three years. Library Trustee, there are two openings for three years. For the Planning Board, there are two openings for three years. For the Sewer Commission, one opening for three years. For the Trustee of Trust Funds, there is one opening for three years. And for the Zoning Board of Adjustment, there is also one opening for three years. On the school side, for the school election, there are three positions for three years. There's also one position for two years. Those are both for the school board. For the school district clerk, there's one opening for three years. For the school district moderator, one opening for three years. The school district treasurer, one opening for three years. These are the official openings as of January 4th, 2021. And as I mentioned earlier, future resignation of elected officials may add to candidate openings through the close of the Business Day on January 19th, 2021. Candidates filing opens at the town clerk's office Wednesday, January 20th, during regular town hall business hours, and ends on Friday, January 29th, at 5:00 PM. And again, candidates filing on the last day, which is January 29th, 2021, must appear in person. That's all I have for announcements. Are there other announcements from other board members they'd like to share? All right, seeing none, I'll move along to the Town Administrator's Report. Derek?
Mr. Chair, the one thing that you did skip over, I know we're off a little bit, is public comment.
Yep, right. Okay, yeah, you're right. Yeah, the timing's way off tonight. So, yeah, let's, I'm gonna take first opportunity to take public comment. Is there anyone joining us that would like to make a public comment at this time? Now would be your opportunity. Derek, do you see anybody, Eric?
We do have one gentleman on the phone for public comment. If you could just identify yourself, please, and then provide your public comment.
Good evening, this is Robert Foho, and I'm calling on behalf of Keybold Corporation of New England. And I was calling to provide public comment on the petition to discontinue a portion of Kennedy Hill Road. That was, and I believe the board was looking to finalize the warrant articles on that.
Okay, go ahead. Please share your concerns, your comments.
Sure, I emailed a letter to Mr. Horn earlier this afternoon, and we basically have two points, and our position is summarized in the letter. But the two points are, number one, the petition requests to discontinue a portion of Kennedy Hill Road between Daniel Plummer Road and Route 114. As I'm sure the Board's aware, or the Planning Board, actually, my client owns Lot 32, or a portion of Kennedy Hill Road is situated. Before the Planning Board, the owner of Lot 32A, the former owner of Lot 32A, that was Goss Town Harvest Christian Church, presently has a site plan application in front of that board to develop Lot 32A for non-residential use. And the discontinuance of Kennedy Hill Road appears to be in furtherance of that application. The church, however, sold Lot 32A last week to my client, and the parties closed on that transaction and recorded the deed on January 7th, that's last Thursday. I enclosed the copy of the recorded deed with my letter to Mr. Horn. So as the new owner of the abutting lot, my client does not endorse the site plan application, and it's gonna be requested to be withdrawn. Once that plan's withdrawn or not approved, there's no longer existent any need to discontinue Kennedy Hill Road, whether on Lot 32 or Lot 32A, and that petition should be mooted. My client just wants things to remain as is for the time being. Substantively, even if that transaction had not occurred, Section 7.4.3.2 of the zoning ordinance requires that for all collector or arterial streets, driveways entering such streets shall be located at least 200 feet from street intersections, and at least 200 feet from other existing driveways on the same lot or on an adjacent lot. Here, my client's property is located in very close proximity to the intersection of St. Anfield's Drive and Daniel Plummer Road. During the morning peak drive time, that's a very busy intersection, and I believe that the, we believe that the applicant's intent to use the right-of-way, with respect to that site plan application that I referenced earlier, the applicant of Andover Consulting, their intent to use a right-of-way that they allege exists on my client's property for access to Lot 32A would create significant traffic problems at that intersection if their intention with the petition was also consummated. Those are the two points I wanted to raise in my comment, and that's all I have for now.
Yeah, it's not working. Thank you, sir. Could you clarify something? Getting feedback from somebody. Could you clarify, sir? Several times you said "we" had concerns. Can you please clarify who you're commenting on behalf of?
Keybold Corporation of New England. They're in a butter to, to... They were notified as in a butter, and that with respect to the petition is discontinue Kennedy Hill Road.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Derek, now I think we're back to Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. In your packet at tab 5A, you have your meeting scheduled for the next two weeks. Tomorrow at 6:00 PM, the Sewer Commission is meeting. It says remote, but I believe that they are meeting here in Room 106.
I've got that covered.
Okay, I will confirm that for you, Chat, on the exact meeting information. At 7:00 PM, the Budget Committee is holding their public hearings. Again, remote. And I believe, Selectman Lemay, you have all that meeting information?
Yep, I do, thank you.
And Wednesday at 6:00 PM, EDC?
Yep, I got that covered.
On Thursday at 7:00 PM, we have the Planning Board.
That's me, I'll be there.
And next Monday, I had asked the Chair for a special Select Board meeting to finalize the warrant, so that'll be at 6:00 PM next week. Next Wednesday, again, just, it was in the announcements, but a reminder, first date for candidate filings. At 6:30 PM, the Library Trustees will be meeting remote.
I'll be there.
At 7:00 PM, Parks and Recs Commission will be meeting. It's yet to be determined what meeting format will be, but we will let you know, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you. And at Thursday at 7:00 PM, the Village River Pedestrian Bridge Ad hoc will meet remotely.
Yeah, I'll be joining that.
Thank you. Your next page, you have your consent agenda. You have employee status reports for bookkeeper, deputy tax collector. This is the added duties for welfare administration. You have the Executive Secretary Welfare Administrator with the split duties for welfare administrator. You have two part-time youth basketball helpers in Parks and Rec. These are both seasonal new hires. You have a right to inter for Shirley Hill Cemetery, Section 3, Lots 51, 38, and 36. And then a motor vehicle title for a 2000 Ford F-350 from the Fire Department. Those all need signature of the Chair or Vice Chair, or that does.
Is that agenda?
That, Chat, I believe made the motion, and Kelly, second the motion?
Yep.
Any discussion on?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Peter.
Question. The positions that, the new positions for Parks and Rec, are those new? Or are they replacements?
So those are, it's my understanding, those are slightly new, because when the school board approved the middle school basketball league, there are additional cleaning duties to take care of because of COVID. So this is to take care of some of those additional items that have not been present in the past.
So would I be accurate that saying that all the new positions are supposed to come before the board for discussion, before we approve them?
That is normally the process. For seasonal, you did give the department heads ability to do seasonal, but as this is a new, I do understand what you're saying?
Well, I would suggest that we have the Parks and Rec director come in and explain the positions to us, as procedure dictates.
I can make that request for your meeting next week.
Also, Derek, the way that you explained it, could you just clarify, is the school contributing to the pay for these positions? Or were they required by the school?
It wasn't that they were required by the school, but there are additional cleaning and pre-check-in items that have been requested by the school for use of their gym space. And the solution that Rick has proposed is going to be taken up by these two positions.
Thank you, Derek. Anything further?
Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to approve everything except for that particular point until we get feedback from the Parks and Rec director.
Okay, so the motion be for everything, but we'll table the two part-time positions, which are seasonal, Parks and Rec new hires. But we're looking to approve the remainder of the Town Administrator's Report, or the Consent Agenda, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I can amend the motion to include that.
Okay, thank you. And Kelly, I think you made the second. Can you second the amendment?
Yes, I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 500.
Thank you. At your next page, you have assessors' recommendations. You have a land use change tax for map 3, Lot 28-5.
All right, we need a motion to approve the assessors' recommendations.
Motion to approve the assessors' recommendation is presented.
Second by Peter. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 500.
Thank you. At tab 5D, you have the annual report of federal equitable sharing agreement funds. This has been prepared by the Police Department. The equitable sharing fund balance did not change in 2020. It is the same as it was at the end of 2019. So just seek a motion to approve the equitable sharing agreement between Goss Town Police Department and the Department of Justice.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual equitable sharing agreement between the Town of Goss Town Police Department and the Department of Justice, and to authorize the chief to sign that agreement.
The chief or the Chair?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chair.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Peter.
I'll second.
That was Chat, I believe.
Yep.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Sorry. Sorry about that, folks. Call a roll, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thanks, that motion passes 500.
At tab 5E, you have a request from department heads. The Family First Coronavirus Response Act, that expired on December 31st, 2020. The US Department of Labor has allowed for extending that for for-profit businesses. They are, it makes them eligible for tax credits, whereas the town would not necessarily be eligible for those. However, the department heads would request a voluntary extension of the COVID sick leave and the expanded FMLA through the end of March, March 31st, 2021. Again, this would give that, this extends that two weeks sick time that was required of employers. We feel it'd be an important tool to make sure that any employees that are exposed to COVID-19, or may be suffering symptoms, are, continue to communicate that information with department heads to keep all employees safe. Broden, that's just a reminder for us. We'll be all set on our end. No, it will not. Thank you.
Questions from the board? On this matter?
Derek, sorry, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Chat.
Derek, my only real question is that the whole idea behind this is to encourage employees who may be sick to report that sickness without a fear of losing out on wages, etc. It's really just, it's a safety measure? Am I correct that that's what this is?
Well, it is a safety measure, but it also, you know, allows those employees to use that COVID sick leave when they are, when they've been exposed and they're seeking treatment, or they may be suffering those. Rather than, our fear is a little bit that if you don't provide this, you're gonna have some employees that may be looking at their own sick time and making different decisions than we would like them to.
Yep, that's exactly what I mean. Okay, thank you, Derek.
Derek, can I just raise a clarification? That FMLA only protects the job protection, it does not include wages. Can you just clarify that that would not change?
Yes, and I'll let Danielle correct me if I misspeak. But yes, this would, this expanded FMLA, it provided expanded job protection for those employees that had been employed for at least 30 days, if they had absences due to COVID, or because their child's school or childcare was closed down. They would still have to use applicable sick leave if they had it, or they'd have to use vacation or personal time. Otherwise, it's the job protection. Is that correct, Danielle?
It's pretty close. There's a few differences there. The FMLA/FFCRA extension provides job protection after 30 days, but only in the instance of someone needing to use that FMLA for remote schooling or childcare closures, not regular COVID, because that would qualify as the employee's own sickness or quarantine. Additionally, there is a provision for two-thirds pay to come from the employer that would also be voluntarily extended, if this is extended. And that is only after they have exhausted their applicable accruals. And for use of remote schooling, the applicable accruals would be vacation, personal time, or comp time. They cannot access sick time for that.
Okay, so none of that's, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Nope, seeing none.
I got one quick question.
Sure.
If somebody goes out of state and comes back and has to go on to quarantine, they have to use their vacation time to offset that?
Danielle, can you clarify if somebody were to travel outside of New England? That non-protected travel, or high-risk travel?
So if the travel is not protected, it's not essential travel, as the board has previously defined under our COVID travel provisions, then they would be utilizing their own time for those quarantines? However, if the employee was using essential travel, such as child-related, or if they live in another state and work here, then those essential travels would be covered under the COVID sick leave, and they'd have access to up to the two weeks, at a maximum of 80 hours of sick time. The extension of this COVID sick time does not restart any of those balances.
So is that for a 10-day quarantine, or a 14?
It's irrelevant of which quarantine type. It's just maxed out at 80 hours, regardless of the full-time position schedule, or how long their quarantine is.
So again, my question is, we're requiring them to quarantine for how long?
Currently, it's 10 days after the travel, but that guidance from the state is changing on a weekly basis now. We actually did get a new update from the Homeland Security this afternoon. So we're basically looking at whatever the state guidance is, and we're following that, those quarantine requirements or isolation requirements.
Which is currently 10 days.
Yes.
So that's a moving target, is what you're saying?
It is a moving target, yes.
But right now, it stands at 10. Okay, thanks for the clarification. Any further discussion, board members?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
It's a little bit off-topic of this specifically, but Danielle, would you mind just clarifying what our current emergency leave is for department heads? I believe we amended that, that it would have to come through the Select Board to be approved. Is that the case?
Emergency leave, under all of the existing policies, require that if a department head were to utilize emergency leave, they are to notify the board at their next scheduled meeting of that use of leave, and the explanation that they, you know, which reason or purpose was approved under the leave.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, we did not put a motion in this, but we'd be looking for a motion from the board to voluntarily extend the COVID sick leave and/or the expanded FMLA through March 31st. I guess you do have a little bit of a choice there, but that's what we would be looking for, for that clarity.
I'll make that motion, Carlos.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you. And it was seconded by Chat, was it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call a roll, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 500.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Kelly?
Thank you. When we initially voted on this, we had to have a separate vote to include our first responders. I just want to make sure we don't need an additional motion for that.
I don't believe that we would require an additional motion. We're just considering this an extension of what you approved back in May.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we can move forward. Okay, thank you. Next is the draft 2021 annual warrant.
So what you have in your packet is the draft warrant language and the order of those articles. Be looking for any questions or discussion with the board. I did send out an email to all members earlier this afternoon. We do have a slight proposed revision to the FIRE Safer Grant article, and I will bring that up on my screen right now. Previously, it said, "Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $90,233.31 for the purpose of hiring four additional full-time firefighters/EMTs?" We would request the board to consider changing the purpose to read, "For the purpose of hiring four full-time firefighters/EMTs to cover shifts currently staffed by part-time or overtime..." to cover shifts currently staffed by part-time or overtime personnel."
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure, go right ahead. Kelly, please.
Thank you. Derek, with that change in language, how, how would we ensure through scheduling that that was actually being carried out? I mean, that puts some limitations on what those employees can do. Is that correct?
I think the overall, I, I think you're, you're currently have on each shift and the fire, uh, fire chief can always jump in and rescue me. But right now you have six firefighters working on each shift. There's four full-time firefighters as well as those part-timers that jump in to assist.
I found this on the web.
So they, this would bring in a fifth firefighter on that. Is that correct, Chief Allard?
Yep, exactly. That would bring in the, changing the ratio again from four full-time firefighters and two part-time per day to five full-time, one part-time. So we're looking to keep the same number of people working per day at six. We're not looking to get a higher number per day.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I got plenty of questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Pete.
Number one, when we decided to go with the four full-timers and part-timers, there was a savings that was projected to the town. Now we're going to eliminate that savings because we all know that a part-timer is less money than a full-timer. My guess, my first question is, are we having a problem getting part-time help? Which was, we were told that wasn't a problem at one time. In fact, we heavily recruited and increased wages for part-time people. So is that an issue now that we can't get the part-time help? I guess that's my first question.
Chief, can you respond to that?
I can. Thank you for the question. So as I've said over the past couple of months throughout COVID, we have had a decrease in our part-time employees. As, as a matter of fact, we're down to, when it talk about call force, we're down to four call firefighters now. People do not want to take the risk of coming in. So yes, this is absolutely impacting us at this time. We've made several attempts to hire additional people. We have more interviews tomorrow for part-time. Many people are also getting full-time jobs. So we're struggling to get part-time people right now. But you are correct, we were, we did have an influx maybe a year ago and we did increase those wages. But even with that, we are struggling at this time.
Peter, do you have a follow-up?
No, I just wanted to make that point that that was the reason why we increased those part-time wages. So I guess I would say that if it doesn't, which has always been my theory is if it doesn't work, then we go to a different direction. A different direction would be a reduction in pay to the part-timers if we're going to hire full-timers. It doesn't make sense to pay part-time, it's more, we paid them more to bring them on board, but it didn't work. So it seems to me if we're going to go with full-timers, we don't need the part-timers anymore, right?
Chief?
I'm certainly not saying we don't need part-timers. We, we will need part-timers to augment. As I stated, we're shifting from four full-time and two part-time to five full-time and one part-time. But it's certainly the board's prerogative if you would like to move forward with reducing part-time wages.
Not promoting that. I'm promoting we stay with the full, with the part-time model. We do that all the time. We say, we're going to hire some, we're going to hire these four people that are part-timers. Everybody buys into the program and then a few years down the road, we get to a situation, oh, we can't find the part-timers, so now we had, need to hire more full-timers. And it's not just in your department, Chief. It's also in town hall and other areas that we say that. We change our personnel plan and say we're going to use part-timers. Two, three years down the road, we don't use, all of a sudden, all the part-timers aren't working. We need to take those positions and make full-time. I just have a problem with that. We do this all the time. And I think the taxpayers need to know right up front that this is what we're doing. And I understand where you're going with this. I don't, I'm not sure if I fully support it, but I understand the reason for it.
I'm done. Thanks, Peter.
Yeah, we're, we're certainly struggling. We want to make sure that we're continuing to provide the same high level of service that this town certainly deserves.
But the underlying problem is the problem with attracting part-timers, recruiting part-timers, right?
And keeping them and, and the ones, again, we've, we've lost several due to this pandemic. Some people just don't want to take the risk.
Yeah.
They're doing this as part-time work to support their families and they, this is a, you know, risk versus, they're doing analysis on their side and many of them have decided not to work.
Peter, do you have a follow-up or any, anything else?
Call a smart.
No, I want to disagree, but I just, I just, you know, let's remember that we, hopefully this pandemic's not going to last forever. That's, you know, and we'll be back to normal and everybody will be looking for part-time. And then what happens is, well, okay, we'll get you on part-time. So then we've hired four new full-timers and now we've got some more part-timers. But I just, I, I just want to make sure our bases are covered. That we're not letting, we're not letting our department heads, and I have no problem with any of our department heads, but we want to make sure we keep them in check because that's our job also.
Yep. Mark, you wanted to comment?
I was just going to add to Chief Allard's comment that locally here and around the community, there's been a lot of hiring that's been done lately. They're hiring four and five at a time. And the four and five at a time that they've been hiring, unfortunately, one or two have come from Gofftown and the one and two that we just recently hired have come from Gofftown. So it's a good thing to have the call force. The call force supports good employment. We get to train them, we get to show them how things are done in the town of Gofftown. I understand Peter's concern, but yet I feel the call force, I'd be, I'd be beside myself if I said, "We don't need the call force anymore" because there would be a very large increase in, in salary, paying the full-time firefighters, paying the benefits and paying the retirement, where the call force firefighters are very valuable to us. They don't cost us as much. And I would like to see us continue with the call force and, and make that work for the town of Gofftown so that the town will be safely protected. I know over the holiday, Chief had a very hard time filling some stations and I was quite concerned, but he did his best and I understand. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And the board members have questions or concerns relative to the wording of this article? This is Article 7. I guess we can move along.
So is the, is I guess the consensus of the board to, to make that, that switch in that language? And I ask because we would like to present that to the Budget Committee as part of the budget hearing tomorrow night with that new wording.
That was my understanding. Is that correct, Peter? Is that your understanding? Peter?
Sorry about that, I was muted. Yes, hi, that's my understanding.
Okay. Anybody else? Everybody clear on, on where, the direction we're headed?
And sitting on the Budget Committee, we can, I'm in favor. I'll, I'll explain it to the crew and it's basically pretty much just a language change. The money's same, which is why I'm concerned.
Yep. Great. Anyone else want to weigh in? Okay, thank you. Let's move on down through the warrant.
Derek? The only other, so no other language has changed from what you've seen, from what we've discussed in the past. There is one small change from what was in your packet that needs to be made. Diane contacted me. Article 10 in your packet reads, "This sum shall come from library trustees restricted funds," where it should read unrestricted funds. So we would be making that change as well. And then the only other item I think that is up for discussion would be Article 13, which is on page four. That would be the petition to discontinue Kennedy Hill Road. At this point, it, it appears that the new owner of that lot does not wish to move forward with that petition. And I think it would be the best thing to just drop that article off the end of the warrant at this point.
I'll make the motion that we drop that article off the warrant as the, the property owner has changed and does not want the article to go spread.
I'll say that. And we heard comment on that earlier in the meeting during our public comment. And so we had a motion by Peter and a second by Mark, I believe.
Give it to Chat. He was first.
All righty, Chat, you win. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this relative to Article 13? Do we need a motion? No, we don't need a motion, do we? I made a motion. You did.
Just got a hold on it.
Yeah, hang on. It's a little hard hearing some of you folks. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Call a roll, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Chat?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion passes 500. I don't think we need action on anything else on the, on the warrant. Is that correct, Derek? That's the way I'm seeing it?
That is correct. And then what we would do is the Budget Committee will hold their public hearing tomorrow night.
Right.
They will make their vote on recommendations after the public hearing tomorrow night and we will bring this back for final votes for the Select Board next Monday.
Okay, thank you. So we're down to department head updates. Kelly, we've got one written. You want to address that one first? Kelly, this is the library. Since we've got it before us in print. Kelly, do you want to speak to the department head update for library? Kelly? Kelly, Kelly, Kelly. All right.
I'm here.
Okay. Did you want to speak to this, this update, Kelly?
Uh, yes, please. I'll just give a couple of updates on behalf of the library. After many months of work by Tammy Gross, the new website was unveiled on Friday night, January 8th. So please take a look at the gofftownlibrary.com new website. And feasibility study, the second community forum is scheduled for Saturday, January 23rd at 2:00 PM at Star Call on Church Street. There's lots of information on the Facebook page, on the town website and also the library website about that forum. So if you're interested in learning about the feasibility plans for the library expansion, that's going to be a really good informational forum and a chance to ask questions. And then finally, the library's still in their same, their same scheduling for being open currently. They're doing parking lot pickups for materials, book bundles for foyer browsing, take and make crafts, appointments for community computer use, family browsing in the children's library. They're doing lots of online programming, including storytime and book discussions and team podcasts in coordination with Gofftown High School, which has been really great. And you can find out all of their programs available at gofftownlibrary.com. And the library's open and they are pumping out lots of incredible programming to still connect people to our library services.
Thank you for the update. Go ahead, Peter.
Uh, and say on, it looks on here that they're hiring a construction manager, management firm for the construction where there is no funds for a construction yet, just a feasibility study. So where are the funds for the construction management coming from?
I believe, and Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is coming from the board's portion of, sorry, the trustees' portion of the project fees. Is that correct?
That is what is proposed in their warrant article for 2021 town meeting.
They're not quite ahead of that, but that's where those funds specifically are planning to come from. It still has to be voted on.
Okay.
I'm, I'm kind of lost in what you guys just said. Did you understand that, Carlos, what they?
Yeah, yeah, can you maybe be a little more succinct, Kelly? I mean, Danielle?
It's my, it's my understanding that the $95,000 warrant article that will be on the ballot in March is, are the funds to hire that construction management individual.
Well, according to the, to Article 10, the $95,000 is for continuing planning for renovation in, of the current library. Doesn't say anything about, I guess it says that you're hiring a construction manager and fundraiser. I'm not really sure how that works, but that's fine if it's spelled out in the article, but it just seems premature to hire a construction manager without having the funds to build something.
Yeah, and you know, and not only that, $95,000 certainly isn't going to hire a construction manager through the life of the project, that's for sure.
And do a feasibility study.
Right, correct, yeah.
So, so what, what the breakdown of that $95,000 are for the project cost, and I will share this on my screen so every, all the members can see this, is $15,000 would be for land for survey, geotechnical investigations, soft costs, so $30,000 for fundraising consultant, $5,000 marketing consultant, architecture $20,000, legal fees and a contingency, and then the construction management pre-construction fee of $10,000. So that's how that $95,000 breaks down for the project cost of 2021. And again, that is, that is the library unrestricted fees that they are taking the town meeting to ask for permission to use.
So I understand. What's a pre-construction fee?
I would, I will talk with Diane and get additional information.
Okay, thank you.
You're not going to hire a construction manager to go through that whole project and run it for a year without, for $10,000. That just doesn't happen.
Yeah.
You know, we're just, in our reality.
But that, I mean, that's not for Kelly, that's, Derek, you'll get back more information on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. You satisfied with that, Pete?
Yeah, what else can we say? We can't say, we're not satisfied.
Yeah, the floor is, you're done.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, how about an update from FIRE and EMD, Chief Allard?
Yep, good evening. It's good to see everyone. Just real quick on, as far as a quick COVID overview. In New Hampshire, there's over 52,000 cases. That number's actually doubled over the last 30 days. And I think mostly everyone here has probably been affected or knows someone who's been affected by COVID at this point. Within town, we have 103 cases. The majority of those cases is community spread, so it's, it is definitely outside of the long-term facilities where those numbers were high earlier on in the, in the pandemic. I think each of our, in talking to the department heads, each of our departments has been, felt the impact of this coronavirus now. It's certainly hit internally, the Fire Department, we've had some people who have been out and quarantined. Some of the larger departments around the state have 25% to 50% of the workforce out now. So that's certainly how, having an impact on some of our mutual aid partners. We're working internally at the firehouse, we're, we're working with our first responders to help them through the vaccine process. This has certainly been a very confusing and ever-changing process, but some of our members have been, received their first dose of the, of the vaccine. As the town administrator alluded to earlier, the quarantine period is certainly ever-changing. We're monitoring that almost daily now with information from the state that does come out. Again, in the firehouse, we have, we had a couple of people who were quarantining over the holidays, so that, that certainly impacted operations here. But we're back up and running now at full capacity. Right now, everyone is healthy and remains safe. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Chief Sereno, Police Department.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Chair.
So far, the Police Department is doing well. We have several members that are in quarantine, but they're okay due to exposures. The good news is, majority of our agency is getting the vaccine, and they are actively going through that as we speak. Hopefully, we'll have most of the agency vaccinated by the end of the next month, if it all works out right, but it seems to be some glitches in the system. But in some other good news I'd like to share with the board and with the citizens. Last year, the President had issued an executive order enforced through the Department of Justice that basically was mandating that any police department that wanted to get any grants or federal funding from the, obviously, the Department of Justice, they had to be certified and credentialed by a third party independent credentialing body. And to be in compliance with this executive order, the agency, our agency had to be, it had two mandatory safe policing principles in safe policing and use of force. So what does that mean? It means that we had to make sure that our policies had prohibiting chokeholds for use of force, which we did. We had to have a policy that had some termination of use of force, meaning that if any officer was involved in use of force, that once they had that subject under control, that the force would be discontinued and terminated. Duty to intervene, which means that if anybody, any employee sees excessive use of force, they had to intervene. Basically, any training on use of force and de-escalation techniques, which we have. Mandatory medical care, so if we have any kind of injured person in custody, we had to render first aid immediately. Warning before shooting, letting them know that we're law enforcement officers and that we're letting them know that we're intending to use force. Shooting at or moving, shooting at or from a moving vehicle, which we, our policy says we don't do, so that's good. Any warning shots, which we don't do. Then it went into an early intervention system, meaning that if any officer has any kind of problems, that we have a system in place that would help us understand if they're becoming, likely to become, or risk of violating the use of force in our agency. And policies governing how we hire people. And I'm happy to announce that we have successfully had all that in our policies due to KLEA and some other mechanisms that make sure that we're ahead of the curve, and we received our certification from the New Hampshire Police and Standards and Training Academy that we are certified, and we've passed all of those. So that's some really good news to let the board and our citizens know that we're working hard to make sure that we're staying in compliance.
Thanks, Chief. Questions for Chief Serena?
Congratulations on a job well done, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on not just the chief, but the fire chief. And their, their online presence, especially on Facebook, I think is making a big difference in the way people think and operate when it comes to our police departments. And I would, I think they need to continue to do that. You just had a story today, I believe, and I know that Fire Chief has numerous, numerous stories. And I'm hoping we can do that for every, all the departments will jump on board and do that. I know DPW's done that in some of their projects. But the Fire Department, the Police Department have more or less focused on their personnel, which is, I think is a great idea, and I hope you continue to do it.
Well, thank you. I will tell you that we have a really good team around us, and I think it's important to celebrate our people and our successes, just, you know, to the, to the public. So, and we all know social media is one of those platforms that reaches a lot of different people.
Yep, I would agree. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I think puppy content doesn't hurt either, so thanks for keeping us up.
Sure.
And that's it from Mr. Chair. I have nothing else as of right now.
Very good, thank you. There's some sensitive issues you had to deal with there, and I appreciate you tackling those in a very transparent and upfront way. Thank you.
Absolutely.
DPW Director, Adam.
Hi, folks. Good evening. First order of business tonight, I'd like to let you know that the DPW Puppy Dog will be arriving next week. We'll jump on those coattails. Big stuff for us. Currently, biggest thing is the East Unbarton Road washout, the road closure there. As we spoke on the 28th, the emergency authorization request has been submitted and responded to by DES. They've approved us to go forward with the emergency repairs there. Right now, we are awaiting pipe, concrete pipe of the size that we're looking for. We're going to do a 60-inch culvert there with a 30-inch overflow. That pipe's not, not something that most folks have in stock, so we're awaiting delivery there. But we do anticipate to, we started this week with the site work, the site prep, but we are scheduled to receive a pipe delivery tomorrow and then on Thursday, so we should be able to start getting this put back together here pretty soon. The emergency authorization gives us until the end of January, the 29th, to get it complete. So we, rather than start day one with something that stood no chance of receiving the blessing from DES to stay in the ground as a permanent repair, we chose to take a little bit of extra time, a couple of days, and now a few extra days of delivery to get a larger pipe, something that will pass the 100-year storm, which is a requirement for a stream this big for the permanent repair. So we're working with the HTA, the OnCall engineers, to make sure that our permit submission happens as we're constructing, and then we'll meet the timelines DES needs, so they can come out and take a look and hopefully bless what we're doing now as a permanent repair, and we won't have to do the work twice, which of course, nobody wants to do. So everybody's patience is appreciated. It's nice to have a short detour there, but detour nonetheless. So we're hoping to get that back open as, as they've allowed us here in the next couple of weeks before the end of the month. Only other big news, staff had some outages a couple of weeks ago due to COVID. We're all back to full strength, so knock on wood, that stays that way for a good portion, if not the remainder of the pandemic here. And then equipment-wise, we've got a couple of items. The VACON right now is back at McDevitt, taking a look at that recurring start issue that we're having. We just got the dozer back from some track overhaul. Our new Packer truck, though, is back at Peterbilt with that engine issue with the cracked head. So they replaced the heads, and they're still having issues. They think it's a fuel pressure thing right now, but we're going to keep our eyes on this one. I may come back to you here at a future meeting and start talking about our options for, you know, a second and a third warranty repair, and at what point do we start talking to the manufacturer about a, about a new vehicle altogether. Tough, tough vehicle to lose for any period of time, especially now, so stay tuned on that one. And then the only other thing, we've got an F-350 that's out for exhaust manifold work right now. I think that is all I've got. Hopefully, no more storms on the horizon.
Thanks. Questions for Adam?
Question?
Sure.
Adam, Selectman Lemay, how are you?
Sure, I'm good.
Good. What's the status with Belmore as far as being available? I had an issue this past weekend that I was not very happy with. What's their status as far as availability 24 hours a day?
So, Belmore, the Sewer Commissioners worked with them at the tail end of the year to do some of their structure cleaning. They, I think, are meeting this week to probably discuss what the plan's going to be with them for 2021. They may shift to them full-time. Not quite sure what the, what their plan's going to be just yet. Belmore does have an emergency service. I, we don't have them, you know, we don't pay them or anything like that from DPW to keep them on call, but generally, they've been responsive, and we've had emergency issues in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question on the same vein? Adam, have you done any studies to see the advantage of maybe privatizing that particular part of our DPW? Oh, I ring that up because it seems like that friggin' truck is always broken, or there's always something. That, that is an expensive piece of equipment, and it's a high-maintenance piece of equipment. We have two guys on it. Have we done any studies to see if it would be possible, if we would save any money by going, by privatizing?
It's, it's been a bit, a few years. The, the, one thing that I am anxious, like, I got some preliminary numbers from Sewer, what they, what they paid them and how many, you know, feet and number of structures they got this fall. We could kind of take some of that. I wanted to hear, hear from their meeting and kind of see which way they're leaning before we went too far down that road, but I could take that information, extrapolate what we, what we'd look at for our stormwater system. The one piece that, you know, a couple of pieces, I guess, it's the emergency response ability, as Selectman Lemay alluded to, that we, we aren't necessarily concerned about, but it would be, factor in pretty heavily in the decision to ever abandon, you know, an in-house truck. And then the other piece that we, we tend to use throughout the year is just a short, short notice, short fuse, come out to a job site, use the VACON to do some controlled excavation around. Maybe we might find a utility in the ground or something as we're digging. And with the VACON, you can kind of flush the gravel around from it without actually putting equipment on, on the utility line. So it comes in handy quite a bit in some of that stuff. We're just not quite sure on a, on a short notice if we'd have that ability with, with a company such as Belmore. But it's certainly eye-opening, the amount of money that the Sewer Commissioners were able to, I think, or the amount of drainage and sewer system they were able to get cleaned for the amount of money they paid us, if that's so. That's something we're going to, we're going to definitely want to look at in the off-season. But I think a little early right now to tell if, if going forward, you know, what I would try to target would be when the truck is ready for replacement.
So would it be reasonable to say that you could do it probably before next year's budget process, that we do a cost analysis and see really what we're, what we're up against?
I think we kind of have to, yes, at this point, certainly before CIP, because it's in there for CIP, so we better, we better know for sure which way we're leaning.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for Adam?
I didn't get that.
Thank you, Adam.
All right, Siri, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Adam. Parks and Rec. Director Wilhelm, good evening. You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry. Sorry for being late and clueless at the same time. Let's see, update, department update. As far as the three, our three staff, we're all fine. Over a, over the Christmas to New Year's, we just had a self-quarantine where somebody was, someone in contact, followed all the protocol, all the plans and all that, and everything is fine. So three, the three of us are doing just fine. Programmatically, this week, we started back. We, we shut all our programming down for about six weeks during the, from Thanksgiving to New Year's. And we started programming back up, so we have our, our bone builders up and running again. We have our growing grizzly basketball. We have our activity period. These programs are running, and they're running just like we originally planned to have them run with all the CDC guidelines, state guidelines, fitness guidelines, amateur sports guidelines, all the cleaning and all the necessities involved. The youth basketball, we were approved for a middle school program only. So what that means is basically, boys and girls, grades five through eight, who attend Mountain View Middle School, they are able to participate in that program. The, the guidelines that we are following are identical to the same guidelines that the NHIAA has put forth, and also the modifications from the school district as well. So between those two, we're following those guidelines. I mean, all the, all the kids are wearing a mask, playing a game. Everybody's wearing a mask. We're going to have one, one, one family member per, per athlete who is going to be able to attend. And then we'll follow all that protocol there. What I, what we are doing there is I, looking at bringing in two other staff to help us with that. And what that basically is, is we had in the budget, we had in last year's budget, is a basketball coordinator's position. So taking that position, and we need two bodies to make this work, so that way there, we use that position to, to kind of make that work. I put that forward to you all for approval. Those two part-time positions as well, so. Facility-wise, facility-wise, I think we might have a problem with the Roy Park pool. I'm a little nervous. There's, we've lost a lot of water in that pool, and I can't tell why. It covers on it, snows on it, et cetera. My gut feeling is that the main drain finally totally let go. But I can't answer that until we can get in there in the spring and see what we actually have. So the other thing, too, is we've actually been approved with our permit to install the stairs down by Glen Lake behind the building. So now I just have to work with the contractor and notify DES when we begin that job, so. That's what we got.
Question? Yeah, Peter?
Yeah, my question is on Roy Park. There was, there was talk about importing a different type of facility in there and eliminating the pool. If it comes to the point that that's going to need to be dug up to replace something underneath, would that be the time that you would go ahead and put, what was it, sprinkler system or, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a really, really good question, Peter. And, and the long haul with that one would be to kind of make a, what you call a spray park type of facility, but I, I don't know. I'm just nervous. It's like, why is this water gone? And I, I, I hope it's not that, but I think it might be.
So was that the time that you would go ahead and put the spray park in?
Well, I guess that's, that's a, I guess I would propose something like that, but that's not in any direct CIP type of cost type of thing, Peter. And I don't know if, if because of mother nature and destruction, do you have a different way to, to maneuver around that process? I don't know. But yes, that would be something that would be, we would consider.
I don't want to put good money into bad. I mean, if that's.
Oh, I, I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Because I, because I, I mean, I don't even know, I mean, I don't even know what that would cost to do, but I guarantee you, it's no, no less than probably 25, 30 grand to do that.
All right. Anything else for Rick? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. And Derek, that brings us around to Admin Town Hall.
Yeah, the only thing I would ask, Mr. Chair, is do you want to take up the two part-time youth basketball helpers? Because you did pull that off the consent agenda for this evening. And now that we have Rick on the meeting, you can probably answer any questions the board might have on those two positions.
Sure, let's revisit that. Rick, can you provide any input on this, the two part-time?
Well, I think I kind of did a little bit in my explanation. What we have, we have in our budget, already in our budget, is a basketball coordinator position, all right? And if you were running a full league with all your divisions, co-ed, high school, et cetera, we had in there for, this would have been the second year for this position. So what we did, what I, what we're looking at is taking that position for this time period, this time being, is in make a, use two people, because we really need four bodies to do the guidelines, to follow the guidelines correctly and smoothly to get people in and out of the building. So it's, it's, it's taking that program coordinator position and kind of making it into two, to make it work for this year's season.
Thank you, Rick. So we had pulled those two off of the consent agenda, and we're bringing them up now. Are there questions from board members now that we've heard?
A little confused. I thought it had something to do with, we need that at schools or something, that we have to hire these two people?
It's, it's, I think, I put it as, is greeters. I created a name for it, greeter and usher. What has to happen, Pete, is you need, you need a body to check. What has to happen, Pete, is you need, you need a body to check people in, to do all the protocol questions, to do the, the temperature checking. You need another body to manage and guide people through the hallway while a game is going on. Then you need another body, which is going to be me, is going to be the person that's going to go with the electronics disinfectant machine and do all the spraying and cleaning. So we're all going to have a role throughout the, the five games that'll be played during the day.
Okay, I just, I think that the question was the cleaning thing. I think that's what brought up the question on. Well, let's check it, Rick, and see what this is all about. These are new positions. Normally, new positions come to the board before we go ahead and authorize them. So I understand what you're saying and what you're doing. So are you eliminating, not eliminating, suspending the full-time position and bringing in two part-timers? Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Because we need to entertain a motion to, to approve those two part-time positions. Any questions or?
On that motion, call us that we approve the two part-time positions in lieu of the full-time position.
Thank you, Peter.
Second?
Second by Mark. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Call or roll? I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 500. Derek, back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Have a good evening.
So yes, at, at town hall, everybody fortunately remains healthy. We, last Monday, the new building secretary started in, and our retired building inspector, our building secretary, Mary LaValle, has been helping us out, helped get her up to speed on some of the items. We are starting to pull together items for the annual report from different departments in the school district and the water precincts. We've been preparing for the budget hearing tomorrow evening, and next week, the board will see all the paperwork associated with the 2021 budget as well as default budget, and we'll be working with the town clerk and the moderators on, and the supervisors of the checklist on deliberative sessions. So we've been quite busy with those items.
Thank you, Derek. Any questions for Derek? Thank you. Before we get down into the select board discussion, second opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody who's watching tonight who'd like to provide public comment? Now's your opportunity. Derek, do you see anybody on the line?
No, there's no one on the line.
Okay, thank you. So select board discussion, is there any new business or old business? We already covered the action matrix, or at least one of the items that was relative to the, the truck with the cracked head. Any other new business or old business that members of the board want to bring forward? Seeing none, we do have a non-public session that we need to, to go into.
Make a motion, we go into non-public on the RSA 91-A, call in three, A compensation, and see adversely affecting reputation.
Thank you, Peter. Second?
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Call or roll on going into non-public session. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yep.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes 500.